Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education. With that, I would like to just remind everyone that the actions taken at this table will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susie Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Sasha. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, well, since it was my month to review the bills, sorry, I just have some, just kind of some general questions. So I noticed that we spent on charter buses about $5,000 in this cycle. I know I asked this question before, so I'm just curious, do we, do we need even, do we need to buy some more school buses to cover that need, or I guess?
Most, but not all of the charter expenses this month are due to the fact that different athletic teams have requested to take a charter. And typically, when they request to take a charter bus, when we have one available, the district pays the full amount of the charter bill, but then invoices the particular program, athletic program, for the cost over and above what it would, what it would cost to operate a regular school bus to perform that run. So as an example, if we were going to Cedar Rapids for the volleyball tournament last week, we would calculate what it would cost to drive a school bus down and back with the driver, and then the district would pay that portion of that charter bill, but then the individual volleyball program would pick up the balance.
Then another question, just kind of on looking at our, we have all kinds of projects, obviously, going on throughout at North Cedar, you know, Aldrich is pretty well finished up. And North Cedar, particularly in this chance, in this instance, I was looking at North Cedar, and we've got about $68,000 worth of change orders that we've accumulated, which on a project of $8 million, that's not really a lot amount. Can you just kind of talk through, what's the process of a, of who signs off on a change order? You know, how, how does that work? Because obviously, we're kind of in, you know, construction management mode here, a little bit on these three projects.
Well, first off, a change order will come about when, when a, when a situation develops that's basically unforeseen. A classic example at North Cedar would be, we thought the elevation or the depth of the sewer lines leading out of the building were at a certain depth, and then when we found out a little bit later, they were higher than, than what we originally anticipated. So we had to do some changes as far as the plumbing in order to make that connection work. So that would be an example of what a change order might occur on a project. And the board, by board policy, we have authority as to what we can do administratively before we need to take that change order request to, to the board for approval. We sit down, we talk, talk about the need. Once we agree that we have the need, the contractor then prices the additional charge for that. Then that's reviewed by both engineering and the architect and the district to make sure that we believe that that charge would be appropriate. And then at that point, then all three parties, the, the architect, the contractor, the architect, and then the, then the district then will sign off on that. And I'm typically the one that will sign off on that. If there's a question about something, I'll consult with Dr. Pat Teague about that. But generally, I will take care of that. We keep a running tab on what our allowance or buildup is. Each contract that we have, our three major contracts have a, an allowance within that to allow for these sorts of things to take place. And so I can tell you to the penny what we have left of each one allowance on each project. So we make sure that we stay within the overall budget.
Yeah, I think as we all know, sometimes the remodeling can run quite a bit more than the actual new construction. And we have found that some of our as-built plans, as they were given to us when those buildings were built, that were currently remodeling, some of the as-bills weren't quite accurate. So there's always some of those change orders when it comes to depth of, say, footers, or sometimes, as Mr. Nevesker just described, the depth of some of our sanitary sewer lines and things like that. Thank you.
Other questions? Anybody else? All right, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Public comment, any?
Nope.
Nope, all right. Moving on to communications. Marika Yang, our student representative for the high school.
Hello.
Okay, so these past few weeks at the high school, we've been wrapping up the food drive, which has been an extremely successful event, event, thanks to the combined efforts of the junior highs, Southdale, Hanson, Aldrich, and North Cedar. We raised approximately 31,355 meals and won the competition between the different districts. So go us.
Woo!
The total amount of meals raised between all districts was approximately 66,172 meals, which means we contributed about half of these. Rocket Club presented to NASA this past week as well about the progress of the project. And our girls volleyball team placed second in the state on Friday. And then Volunteer Club has also started weekly trash pickups, and these consist of cleaning up the high school grounds and parking lot.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Marika? All right, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Janelle Darst.
Hello, good evening. It has, like Marika said, it's been a very busy couple of weeks, not just at the high school, but across the district. And I count myself very lucky that I'm the one that gets to stand up here and share with everybody. The first thing I just wanted to mention, we have some exciting news. We have three National Merit semifinalists, Astoria Chow, Alex Glascock, and William Sims. And then we also had Rachel Broadhead as a commended student for the 2019 National Merit Program. So congratulations to those students. Found out, a couple of weeks ago, I think, that the Iowa STEM Council awarded STEM Best Grants, and the CAPS program was chosen of one of 13 of those across the state. They choose typically a few of each of the STEM regions. And this grant's going to support the CAPS program as well as launching a summer CAPS experience. And this was, I believe, the third year in a row that the district has received a STEM Best Grant. A couple of years ago, North Cedar received the grant for a program they were doing with Sidecar Coffee, and then last year, the CAPS program as well received it. So it was very exciting news to be able to possibly launch a summer CAPS experience for high school students. This is just kind of a fun thing to share and mention. Aldrich Elementary staff all dressed up as Dalmatians for Halloween. And Kim Cross, very willingly, she's a principal out there dressed up as Cora La Deville, and I say that very tongue-in-cheek because she's, was very willing to do it, but it's not something she's probably going to do every year, go that, quite that far. But I think this just kind of speaks to the atmosphere that they're definitely building out at Aldrich Elementary. Even the morning, as the kids were coming in, they were playing Who Let the Dogs Out, and kind of just created a really fun atmosphere. Halloween fell on a school day, of course, so across the district, there were lots of things happening, especially at the elementary level. So lots of fun things to see across there. So Aldrich had an especial amount of fun. Just a couple congratulations. This is the CF Timeout Cheer Team. They placed second in the state cheer championships. Congratulations to Grace Farrick. She was second place at state swim meet in the 100-yard backstroke. And this right here is just a couple of social media posts from Holmes Junior High. They had Steen Metz, a Holocaust survivor. He was eight years old when he was arrested in his home in Denmark, and then his family was deported to a concentration camp. He took the time to share with those eighth and ninth grade students his story, and I think it was very impactful for those students, and just a really great opportunity that he was willing to share his time at Holmes Junior High with those students. We had lots of activities across the district recognizing Veterans Day. This is actually at the high school. On Friday, they had their Veterans Day ceremony with music, and then recognition, and as well as guest speaker. This was at Holmes Junior High, and Holmes has a great tradition. They invite veterans from across the community to come and have breakfast, first thing in the morning, and that's hosted by the student council, and they invite all the veterans to then come. And they have a student-led program. They do readings, they have music, and then during the assembly, they recognize all of the veterans. And they really especially make special effort to invite veterans of students, so family, friends of those students, so they can all then be recognized. So it's a really great experience for those students. And then also today, Southdale Elementary, they have a great partnership with Hy-Vee. So on Veterans Day, the sixth graders went and they handed out bags to the veterans, because Hy-Vee offers free breakfast for veterans. So the students went and did that, and then they also had lunch for veterans, and then did, the fourth and sixth graders did an assembly and program there as well. So there was lots of great things happening across the district to recognize Veterans Day. The high school chamber choir had a great experience. Earlier this month, they were able to do a master class with the 10 tenors. This was on the day of their performance at the Gallagher Blue Door, and so they worked with them during the day, and then they actually were onstage at the Gallagher Blue Door and performed with them as part of that performance at the Gallagher Blue Door. And so special thanks to the Gallagher Blue Door for offering that opportunity for our students. And I think it was kind of one of those things where it's once in a lifetime to be able to kind of train with that level of singers and then perform on that stage, so. Also wanted to mention, I thought Marika might mention this specifically, but as she's walking out. So she's been part of the high school. They've launched this environmental awareness team, and in November, every day, they're doing a different kind of challenge. So they're doing a 30-day challenge within the month of November. They have some really great tips and ideas of how you can make an impact on your environment. And I would really encourage people, you can follow them on Twitter and Instagram for all of the different tips they have every day. This is definitely a completely student-driven project, and they have really taken it and kind of run with it. So it's been really fun to kind of watch that on social media, all those tips they have every day. Last week was the STEM Festival, and it was down at the convention center in Waterloo. We had a great representation by our CAP students. Many of our elementary and other secondary buildings had representation. And then, of course, our robotics team, the Swartstocks were there. So thanks to everyone that came out to support the STEM Festival. I wanted to do just a quick mention. We really need some volunteers for an activity that we're promoting at the elementary level. Hour of Code Week is December 3rd through 9th. And we need some volunteers to come in and help with a one-hour lesson just sometime during the month of December. The volunteers will work with the students, help with the online lessons, and then just kind of to have a short explanation if they have experience in computer science. And this really coincides with our district-wide plan of providing computer science instruction for our students at all levels. So if anyone would be interested in just volunteering an hour with us, we'd encourage you to email Kent Swartley. He's our community partnership and STEM facilitator. I think we're in need of 150-some volunteers that he's trying to, to get figured out, so any help in that would be great, great thanks to people. Of course, Marika mentioned before as well, but big congratulations to our Cedar Falls volleyball team. They were state runners-up. They had a great run last week at the state tournament, and it was a well-fought final match, and there was some impressive volleyball to see. So congratulations to all of them, and also to the coaches, on a fabulous season. And we are kind of ending our fall sports, but as winter was start, literally today, practice has started. We do, will have our winter sports kickoff tomorrow night at 7:30 in the high school gym, be recognizing all of the winter athletes, and then kind of kicking off that season. So we hope everyone will come out for that. And then our fall's really not quite over yet. So our state football championship, the Tigers are in that game, so it's this Friday, kicks off at 7:00 at the Dome. And we just wanted to mention that people can buy tickets at the high school between 7:30 a.m. and 3:30 p.m. If you buy the tickets at the high school, a small credit of that will go back to the district for every ticket we sell. So it can kind of help us offset some of the costs that come with having those events up at the Dome. And we also want to encourage everyone in the community to wear red Friday, show your support for our Tigers as they take on Dowling for the state championship. And the Booster Club is promoting for people, if they want to come out Friday before the game, kind of show your support, and then head up to the game, starting at 4 o'clock at Mulligan's on Friday. And I'd wanted to do just a quick thank you and kind of shout out to Denny Bowman and Channel 15. I'm not sure there's another district in the state that has quite the level of support and coverage of, from their local television station, but they were down and covered all of the volleyball games through the state tournament. They've done all of the football games through the tournament. They cover lots of things for us throughout the school year. So we really want to thank Denny and his whole team for their support for us across the district. Any questions?
I do think that you can also purchase your ticket online with the code, so there's no processing fees, and I think part of that fund still go back to the high school.
That is correct. The link was kind of difficult to put on the slide, but you can go to the district Twitter or Facebook page and find the link to actually purchase them online, and you put in a, a code, I think it's CF Tigers. Part of that goes back to the district, and then also, there's no fee is it as well.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Janelle. Okay, now we have a few wonderful individuals that are going to talk to us about American Education Week. Will you introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Siki Brighter, and I am co-president of CF ESP.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Schmidt. I'm a teacher at Lincoln, and I am on the exec board for Cedar Falls Education Association and a building representative as well.
And I'm Kristy Lindhard, and I am co-president of CF ESP. I work at Holmes Junior High.
And we'd like to proclaim this week as American Education Week. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future and...
Whereas all education employees, be they teachers, counselors, teacher librarians, instructional coaches, curriculum specialists, paraprofessionals, school secretaries, custodians, nurses, maintenance and grounds personnel, technology specialists, bus drivers, food service, building principals, business services, human resources, district administrators, school boards, or substitute ESPs and teachers, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism, and work together to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for all students.
Whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, as we, we as representatives of the Cedar Falls Educational Supports Professionals and the Cedar Falls Education Association do hereby proclaim November 12 through the 16th as the annual observance of American Education Week.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know we say this quite often, but we have the best staff in the world, and please, as community members, parents, students, thank the educators that serve you each and every day, because they truly give their life each and every day, and, and give their heart each and every day for our students' success. So thank you.
And we know that you have lots of activities going on this week to celebrate American Education Week. So we, and we travel to Des Moines, starting on Wednesday, to go to the school board, state school board convention. So we'll be down there thinking about you, but also fostering learning and building relationships with others, other school board members in the state of Iowa. So thank you for being here, ladies, tonight. What you do, just like Dr. Patisse said, is very valued, and it is just, it's just an honor to work with all of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to item F on the agenda, the facility presentation and update.
Yes, we have Brad Leeper with us tonight to give us a little bit of information, some of it demographic data, some of it growth data, some of it, just a lot of really information about some of our current facility needs, but also with an eye to the future, as we look at what is the next steps, and certainly what is important as we move forward as a district. It's very exciting times to be in Cedar Falls, in the Cedar Falls Community School District, with all the wonderful activities and events, as Janelle just summed up. But certainly, we know that there's some areas that we continue to grow into. So without further ado, we'll turn it over to Brad.
Great. Yeah, that's a tough thing to follow up on, Cedar Falls, couple of weeks we've had here, so it's great. Well, yeah, thank you, Andy, for the introduction. We're going to talk a little bit about the existing high school, and some information we've been gathering over the last few months. But before we do that, I want to take you back to big picture where we've been. The last time we were here, we talked about process a little bit. We talked about the general process we go through is, is kind of discovery, strategy, and implementation on any project that we do. And we're really getting, we got into discovery last time, and that was the Insight Week that we talked about, where we met with over 250 staff, students, and community members to talk about kind of the why for the project, what's important here, you know, before we start really solving the problem, where are we going? And so this graphics is familiar, you saw it last time. We met with a lot of different people, and we were there for a whole week, kind of talking to different groups. We came out of that with what we call drivers, they're really project drivers kind of moving forward. And that's really about what we identified as a group was connectedness, you know, what are the spaces in the high school that really can connect with each other? Community and co-location was really about how do we then reach out, in a broader sense, to the community, and how do we co-locate some of those uses? And then the diversity, you know, a diversity of spaces is really important, is what we heard from the group. So those were, there's a lot of information there, but high level, we went through that last time, those were the kind of project drivers as we move forward. So keep those in mind as, as we talk about this. So we're going to go to the existing high school. There's, there's, if you guys are like me in the community, there's lots of opinions about the existing high school, right? On both sides, about what it is and what it isn't. And so we wanted to take a bit more of a systematic kind of approach to evaluating the high school. And so the map you see up here is a site plan that each of those kind of separate boxes is a different addition on the high school, and there are 13 of those things that have developed over time. We have done a few kind of diagrams, so the map to the right there is, the orange blob is the building in the middle, and then there's kind of an orange line around it, which is the formal district property. We've done some evaluation of parking and how that influences this neighborhood. So all those blue lines are really parking, and you can see that almost 60% of the parking is off-site, really on the street, and that certainly has an impact on the community around there, and for safety as well, actually, in terms of how we bring kids in and out of the building. We've talked about a little bit of evaluation of, okay, well, we have 17 acres basically here. Can we get some more land? And my understanding is, in the 60s, Andy, is that right? We had an opportunity to purchase land west of Hudson before it was developed, and, and that didn't materialize. But those, that decision really had some impacts on the long-term viability of the, of the project here on this site. So we've looked at, can you get more land here? And the quest, the answer is yes. The answer is always, it's really expensive, right? We talk about buying individual houses, we talk about, you know, repurposing those spaces for, for a new building. It equates to almost a million and a half dollars an acre in terms of development, in comparison to, I think, the new property that was 50 acres, was purchased, was, was under that cost, a little under a million and a quarter, I think, so. So those are things we, we want to evaluate. We take a real honest look at what, what the opportunities are. Then we looked at, from a site point of view, the, the bar on the right is the existing high school, 17 acres. And then we look at, want to look at some peer groups. The regional average in the Midwest averages about 44 acres for a new high school. That number's brought down a little bit by a lot of old existing high schools on small footprints. So we also looked at what are our peers doing in Iowa? And you can see those numbers range from 125 acres to about 70 acres between Johnston and some of the Ankeny Iowa City school districts. So you can see that things have changed a bit over time in terms of the land that's available and lands that needed for a high school. And then there's just some facts on the right. We talked about 13 building additions, and the average age of the building is about 54 years. So there are some new parts of the building that, that have some life left in them, but on average, if we do an average per square foot, it's about 54 years in the building. This is a diagram that shows really organization of the building, so this is a departmental kind of organization. The building has really served the district well for 65 years. It is a pretty classical department organization, and there are multiple options today, but this building is, is kind of drives toward that model. You can see that every color is a different department. You can see how some of those are scattered. A lot of that's about the existing building, and it's a very inflexible building, almost all the walls are structural. And so we are really constrained by those things without spending a whole lot of money on those areas. So there's always going to be a bit of a fragmentation in terms of the departmental organization and the general organization of the school as a result. A question I hear on the street a lot is, you know, what about the existing high school? It used to hold more kids. You know, why is the population what it is? And we've done some evaluation of that, and we have, when the original building was built, there were no kind of college courses or credits offered. Today, we're offering about 72 classes for higher education and college credit. That equates, in addition to other things like STEM and lots of other programs, foreign language, those spaces that didn't exist in the existing high school equate to about at least 20% of the space. We're being pretty conservative of that number, but at least 20% of that space is, is based on program, and it just never existed in the original building. So that certainly leads to that. This diagram is really about, the yellow that you see up there is the newly, more newly renovated, and I say new, it's, it's not new anymore, I guess, but that's the part that the public sees. So the yellow is the, the entrance, kind of corridor as you go through there. And that area has been, has seen fairly significant renovation over the last 20 years. The other areas, the light gray areas have seen pretty light touches, and the dark grays have seen really much of nothing over that time. So if we look at the numbers holistically, about 75% of the building is in need of major renovation. A lot of those areas are behind the wall that, that most of the public sees on a daily basis. So those are important kind of things to look at as we, as we move forward here. About 26% of the building is air-conditioned. So we put a stat up there that about 86% of U.S. households are air-conditioned, and I'm arguing that 14% live in San Diego, probably, or something. And then there's some other data that we had up there about electrical usage has gone up about 350% since the original construction, and obviously, obvious reasons why that happens. These charts, so one of the things we want to look at is what's changed, and the chart on the right there shows enrollment projections, and we're really anticipating a 30% enrollment growth over the next 10 years. And if we do nothing, that means, you know, that's, that's an option, right? If we do nothing, though, that means class sizes get larger, and we're going to be well over 30 on those classroom sizes if that happens. We can see that growth kind of coming through the school district, so it's fairly predictable. We can see that in our elementaries. We can see that in our middle schools coming through. That is coming to the high school. You can see the portable out in front of the high school. That's starting, so it's something to really be aware of. We also wanted to look at how that compares with the city growth. So the chart on the left on the bottom is really city growth over the years, and that's been a pretty steady kind of line, if you extrapolate that, that curve. We've had over 300 houses, and that, I think, number is in the last year and a half, and that's a year-old number. So if you drive around anywhere, you see that number is certainly bigger today.
So Brad, the, looking at the high school enrollment projections, so if I look through, we're pretty steady up through this year. I mean, not, not any really big takeoffs, but according to your chart, so I assume that the kids that are in ninth grade, and maybe this is not necessarily for you with the question, but so our ninth grade class is going to be significantly larger than our graduating seniors this year?
Yeah, so we've been graduating our senior classes in about 350 to 370 ranges. We know that our elementary classes are roughly about 440 to 450. I think our smallest one right now is right around 415. So the, the elementary age class ranges are much larger than they are at our, our high school. And we know that every year, we add more students, not only secondary but also elementary, so those are only going to continue to grow. The housing growth is phenomenal, but that's, attributes back to, when we talk with the developers, about half of the homes are being purchased by individuals outside of the region, sometimes even larger. So we have people that are coming here to this region, buying those homes and those houses, and a lot of it's due to the educational quality and what we, we offer for those families and those students.
So the bump on that chart, said enough, if I may rephrase, is, one, the ninth grade class is bigger than the senior class, and we've just got a natural, not attrition, but attraction to the district of additional students that we're, that we're seeing over time that are, that are adding to the student population.
Exactly, and you can kind of see the trend line going back to 2011, '12, where that trend line continues to go up. There was a slight bump in one of our years, but that- There was a slight bump in one of our years, but that's going to continue to increase for those two factors. A, larger class sizes at the lower levels, and two, continue to attract newer and more families.
Yeah, and I think, one thing that's important, if you tie them two together, I mean, 91% of people that buy households buy a lot because of the school district. And so, that's a factor and a significant factor for all of those. So, these two things are linked of community growth and school growth. So, this is a chart that we showed, this is a historical map of Cedar Falls, the one on the left. The kind of red box on its own is the existing high school site, and the red blob there is really developed area of the city in 1950. And so, we're trying to show some trend patterns here. So, that's 1950, if you look today, developed area, that red blob has gotten a lot bigger, right? And if we really project that moving forward to the right for the next 70 years, you can see where that's going. So, it's really important to think about that growth, and we're making a long-term decision here, and we want to make good decisions that are in the best interest of the district long-term. So, sometimes we lose that perspective, so we wanted to open that up a little bit. One of the things we don't talk about a lot is just educational change. So, one of the, one of the things we look at sometimes is just, what happened the year the school was built? Just to give us a bit of perspective, right? And so, these are the things that were developed the year the school was built. Saran wrap, double helix DNA, which now we believe we have mapped completely, or almost, right? Polio vaccine, radial tires, N I S T. So, what's more important, though, is what's happened since that time. And so, what has changed educationally is, you know, this funny little graphic here on the right, is these little things that we have in our pockets really have access to all the information in the world, almost all the time, wherever we go. And for us, that means, from a facilities point of view, that what we teach and how we learn changes. And what that means is that if we have that information, a lot of it, then what we do with the information is maybe more important as we move forward than the information itself. And that's a fundamental shift, really, from where we've been. Not to say that that hasn't been the case, but certainly, the emphasis has changed. And so, the existing high school is made for the old model, and collaborative areas and how we bring students together and how we bring programs together is really limited in a lot of ways. So, these are just a few images of the high school. If you haven't been to the gray parts of that plan that I showed you earlier, there's a lot of signs, I don't know what's going on there, but there's a lot of signs pointing people in different directions, and when you have a building built with 13 different additions, you're going to get a little bit of that. So, we've done some study over the years of the high school, and others have done studies of the building. And this is a diagram that was done back in 2012, but it started really in 2001 with a master plan for the school district. And that was based on, there's this much money, what can we do? And that was very much the discussion at that time. And that was really doing some things on the front of the building, and the money just wasn't available, and that's just the way it was. And in 2012, there was a study done that was really asked, what do we need to do? And what are the long-term needs of the school? And so, that evaluation was done, and we've updated some of those numbers since 2012. And so, we're looking at those, and you don't necessarily need to read those numbers, but basically, what we're finding as we adjust for inflation is that renovating and adding on to the school is something we can do. It doesn't meet some of the, some of those needs that we talked about in the Discovery kind of Insight Week discussion that we talked about. But the cost of renovating and adding on to the building is about 76% the cost of a new building, as we're projecting it. So, it's significant, and there are some things we can do. Certainly, we're going to make it better, spending that much money on the school, but there are some things that are just structurally what they are, and we're going to be limited by them. So, some of those are, the site is really limited for future growth. We're going to be maxing out the site almost in that, in that option. The expansion really causes some problems educationally. We're projecting this is probably at least a five-year process to, and that's a whole section of kids going through the high school, and almost a couple in their careers while this is going on. We can do some of that, and we can mitigate it as much as possible, but it certainly has an impact. The building is still inflexible, it still is what it is. There are a bunch of security challenges, we haven't really talked about that tonight, but from a site point of view and a building point of view, I think there are 20 entrances here. Can we secure them? Yes, but really changing how people are coming out of that building is a little bit tougher. It's not just about location and putting a lock on the door, it's really about having eyes on the door, how do we supervise different areas of the building? So a lot of kind of structural pieces to how we organize the building to address security in a school. Life cycle costs is something we want to talk about. I live in a house that was built in 1915, put a lot of money into it, and I wish I'd done a master plan maybe before I started, because you could spend a lot of money. So at what point does that make sense or not make sense is something we want to look at. We have ongoing costs as we go through the school. Our ability to meet 21st century learning really is, I guess, one of the biggest one for me. We really have some opportunities to change that in the existing building, and we have some limitations as well. So, we can do either. And then, community growth. As the community grows and keeps growing, what are our options for developing on this site? Are we making a decision that we made in 1960 in terms of limiting growth here long-term? So, I guess as we look at that, we say, well, we should be testing the new site, and there are a lot of reasons to be doing that. And so, as we look at next steps, one of those is to really, we call it a space needs programming, really meeting with staff, talking about space needs, more specifically, updating some of those pieces, going back out to the community groups as we talked initially, presenting some of this information and hearing more input from them as we move forward and explore that option as a possibility.
I think it was important, we said when we talked about some of the Insight Week, some of the data that we collected that we bring back to the board, just some of the background data. We have several new board members, the history going back to 2001, 2012, when a lot of those discussions were being had, to understand how challenging it is with a site that currently has 17 acres. If you look at a 15-year investment, knowing that even with a massive amount, millions of dollars into that building, we're probably going to maximize that space, and we're going to have to look at some additional either changes, movements, or a different building 15 years after that. Economically, efficiency for community growth, it doesn't make sense as you look short-term for that building and that site. So really, this was kind of to paint that picture of some of the why behind the discussions that have occurred over the last, really, now 15, 16 years, to start looking and planning and mapping out, what does it mean as we look at educational quality and educational best practice, especially when it comes to our high school and the new high school? I think most studies, most experts would talk about the cost to renovate is so much higher, and especially with the limitations of load-bearing walls, and then you look at collaboration and communication and critical thinking, really those four Cs that we talk about quite a bit. You just can't do some of that renovation and have that programmatic needs met in a building that's remodeled that was of this age and of this stature. I know Brad did a really good job talking about the data, but as we look over the next 50 to 60 to 70 years, a lot of the outside consultants and experts that we've had come into our community quickly see, investing short-term into a building to be able to maximize expenditures does not make sense as you look over a 50 to 60-year investment for educational quality, educational growth, and certainly enhancing what it means to live in Cedar Falls. Because I would dare to guess that the 91% is probably not a regional number, that's probably maybe a statewide or a national number. I would say it's probably even higher around here, where when families look to move, typically they'll say, we're going to work within a 30-mile radius, we're going to live where we believe our kids, our children are going to have the best educational experience. And typically, they will purchase in Cedar Falls because of that educational quality. I think it's important to note that.
So, a question for you, Brad, I know, and thank you for the presentation, looking at, you know, so we've got, so we've got an older building dating back from 1958, it's got 13 different additions. We'd spent 76% of the cost of a new one to renovate it, and, you know, as Dr. Puzzi says, well, then the limitation would be, maybe we're looking at this in another 15 years, it buys us a short-term. So, one of the questions that I get, and I'm interested just from an architectural, so what are, kind of, what's our short list of what we could do with the existing facility? What's that list look like? I mean, you bulldoze it all because it's so old, it's got 13 additions, or can we, parts of it that can be reused for something else, or?
It's a great question. I think that there are parts of the building that have life left in them, no doubt, particularly those yellow areas that you saw. There are other parts of the building that maybe don't and maybe should be torn down. So, when we talk about reuse, I think there's a lot of opportunities for reuse. I don't have specifics at this point, but I think that needs to be a broader community conversation. If we, if we study the new and we say, this makes sense, what are those possibilities? I mean, certainly, the gym and the athletic areas are in pretty good condition, and the offices, we've talked about potentially moving some and consolidating some district offices, programs into this building, the parts of the building that are good, and maybe taking parts of it down. So, I think there really are good reuse options that will also maybe consolidate some of your programming around the district and save some money there in terms of having, rather than maybe three or four buildings, you have everyone in one spot.
We've had a lot of communications and collaborative conversations around that as well with different community partners, and I think there's some interest to be able to repurpose that building in some ways. There's some areas of that building that are not usable long-term, that need to be demolished, that need to be tore down. But there's other sections, as Brad talked about, that we can repurpose as a district and repurpose, we believe, as a community, for the community good, for the neighborhood good, that's going to be efficient and certainly cost-effective, short-term and long-term. The feasibility as a school building over the course of the next 50 years, because of all the different demands I think we talked about tonight, is not a feasible option, but I think there are some other scalable options that would be proper and prudent use of that.
Would it make sense, if some of the building gets demolished, to reconstruct something that would be suitable for, say, a bus depot? You've talked about needing more spaces to have buses located, would there be enough space to do that sort of thing?
I think that's a challenge, you know, it's something that certainly, as you look holistically, you reviewed and tried to look at that, but we also understand that that's in the middle of a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood, so we want to be mindful of that. I think use of that as some green spaces, some community spaces, it just makes sense short-term and long-term. You know, we know that just the ability to have parking and in and out of access to that site can be limited and certainly sometimes dangerous, just with the amount of traffic that comes and goes, and having something that could be utilized for those amount of hours, that amount of time with bus traffic in and out, might not be the best use of that site.
Brad, I know that, you mentioned that you have a 100-year-old home, so sometimes this is not about the cost, but there's some significance to the structure, like, I think of Waterloo East or Dubuque Senior. Is there anything special about the Waterloo, pardon me, the Cedar Falls High School that makes it architecturally significant or historically significant that you know of?
You know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, right? And is it historic? You know, technically, anything over 50 years could classify as historic. You know, would we get tax credits from the state or federal to restore this building? No, we wouldn't. So, is there value? Yes, historical, probably not. Especially with a number of additions that have been put on the building, it'd be one thing if the building was original state of its 1950s kind of construction, but there's been a lot of changes to it.
One of the things too, and I think Brad noted it really well, the front entrances of the building, the gymnasium, the auditorium have been remodeled, they look attractive, but when you get down into the educational facilities, educational classrooms, they are not. Some of the pictures did justice where it says, please close this door, interior door, otherwise it's going to get too cold in the hallway. The heating and cooling, the infrastructure, not only just educational spaces are challenged within that space. I think it's also kind of important to note that Brad summed it up well, I thought, with parking, but it was close to 60% of the students park off-site. When you go and talk to students, and typically, especially at the elementary and junior high, and you say, oh, you're here at school early, can you talk to me about why you're here? It's usually about enrichment, it's usually about opportunities that they have for education. When you talk to high school students and you go and say, hey, why are you at school early today? I wanted to find a parking spot, so I didn't have to walk a mile or so to school. And it just changes the conversation and the contextual component of why are you here and what attracts you here? Sometimes, you know, especially at the lower levels, it's about that educational quality, at the secondary level, it's about parking. And we want to change that conversation to be about, I'm here because there's some things that I want to be enriched about, to have additional opportunities about, and our high school does not provide that, nor can it provide that long-term.
Any other questions or comments?
Could we get a copy of the PowerPoint presentation? Could that be posted?
Yep, Chanelle's got one.
Thank you, because I couldn't read it.
We'll send it out to everybody, it'll be posted online, so apologize for that. Lot of great data, and a lot of components, and a lot of this is something that we'll continue to kind of push out too, because there are so many important did you knows involved with this. And again, we're changing, not only societally, economically, regionally, we're changing educationally with how we focus to make sure all students learn at those high levels. And space allocation, space that allow those four Cs is critical to help those students be successful short-term and long-term.
Brad, we'll look forward to the continued conversation, so thank you for walking us through this tonight.
You bet, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item G on the agenda is the first reading of the board policy, 1007.1, service/assistive animal.
So, I can talk briefly about this. Typically, we don't insert new policies mid-year, but this is one that we've been continuously working on over the course of the last multiple months, something that we've had a lot of people involved with, not only internal staff, but individuals from the State Department of Education, as well as attorneys to help us craft this policy. As you will note, that the policy title really is service animals permitted, because there are really kind of two classifications of animals allowed or potentially allowed into buildings, and that is, A, service animals that are there for the educational quality of students, they are there to serve students with special needs that have special challenges to be able to help them receive that appropriate education and provide a service to help maximize that educational service. This does not, and it just has one sentence, that talks about more of the therapy animals or therapeutic animals that allow maybe there for students to feel, you know, different emotions with an animal there that doesn't provide direct service to help support that free and appropriate public education. I think it's important to note that in federal code, there are two types of service animals that can actually be trained to be service animals, dogs and miniature horses. So it outlines this by code and what that means, but it also goes into detail about the reasonableness and what are the expectations with each of those animals that could be classified as service animals. So what this does is provide clarity and context for us, because we are getting more and more requests as a district. I think it is important to notice that we do have a section of this, because we take great pride in having a partnership with an organization that's placed, actually out of Waverly, that really helps to train service animals, service dogs. So we do have some staff members that are actually hosts for those service animals that are eventually placed out into homes of veterans or homes of students that might have disabilities, and we see that as an important link. Very large commitment, which is a two-year commitment, but it is mentioned in here because we knew if we were assigned on that issue, that would be something that would raise questions and raise different aspects that we just wanted to make sure were publicly noted. But again, this is a policy that, in this day and age, as But again, this is a policy that in this day and age, as we talked about earlier, education sometimes is changing, but our society is changing. And we needed something in place so we could be able to make the right decisions, appropriate decisions as we look at service animals differentiated from other kinds of animals that may come into the environment.
Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of this policy?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the first reading of board policy one zero zero seven point one, service animals permitted.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second is by Eric. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on now to item H, superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a couple of different items. The Iowa Association of School Board State Convention is coming up, as Joyce mentioned earlier, and that'll be over the next several days, starting on Wednesday. The November twenty-sixth board report will have an I A S B follow-up. The hope is to have that at five o'clock. And I'll send out a reminder to everybody from five to five-thirty to have that dialogue. And then the board meeting started at five-thirty. December tenth is the following board meeting and that's, the hope is to have our computer science update at that time. We may move just to the length of that agenda, but trying to work with Brian Andrew on that as well. Very excited just with some of the components. We have a lot of activities going on, certainly over the last couple of weeks. But as we look forward to the next couple of weeks, it's a great time to be a Tiger and certainly a fun time to showcase all the work that our students, staff and community are doing.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Patty? Thank you. Moving on now to board members' questions, comments or concerns.
The one thing before we adjourn tonight, I'd like to say, and Janelle talked about or highlighted some of the events taking place regarding Veterans Day. Want to make sure that the community and just anyone in our district that has been a veteran or is still actively serving, that we want to thank you for your service. Because without you, we wouldn't have the freedoms that we are afforded today. And just know that from the bottom of my heart, I live in a home with a veteran and two active military, my son and my grandson. So it touches me deeply, but I know that, living in the United States, there are lots of things that we get to do because we, our veterans, take care of us. Thank you.
Moving on now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and now do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.